DB, annual budget. DBC, budget deadlines and schedules. DBD, budget planning. DBG, budget adoption procedures. DBJ, budget transfer authority. DD, grants, proposals, and special projects. DEC, federal funds supplement, not supplant, policy. DGA, authorized signatures. DH, bonded employees and officers. DI, fiscal accounting and reporting. DIE, audits. DJ, purchasing. DJA, purchasing authority. DJE, procurement requirements. DK, payment procedures. DKC, expense reimbursements. Then we will have the superintendent's update, the assistant superintendent's update, warrant approvals. The consent actions include approval of minutes from December 1, 2022. Approval of gifts and donations. Committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So I will take the roll call and just ask everyone to please confirm that you're okay with the order of business this evening, starting with you, Paul Kendall.
Yes.
Tina McPentney?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary, Erin Williams is joining us remotely.
Hearing, yes.
Thank you. Okay, we will start by asking if there are any item, any members of the public that wish to give comment this evening. I don't see any in our audience here, but there may be somebody online.
There is, just in case.
And then seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the equity audit presentation. Are we starting there?
Yep, that's where. My question, do you need to do an introduction, please? As you know, we have worked and partnered with LMP Educational Services to conduct a comprehensive equity audit of the district and how we are doing in terms of our diversity, equity, and inclusion practices here. It's a goal of all of ours. So we invite Mindy and Keith, who partnered up with us for quite a while, to present to you this evening. So welcome, Mindy and Keith, from LMP Educational Services. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. And we would like to thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening to share our, the equity audit from 2022. My name is Keith Lozama, and I am the co-founder and co-chief empowerment officer for LMP Educational Services, and I'm joined by Ms. Mindy Palo. During our time together, during our time together, we will share a little bit about LMP Educational Services. We'll talk about the process and overview of the equity audit. We'll discuss factors that support and limit equity and excellence, and we'll share recommendations that we believe will have the greatest impact on Ashland Public Schools. Please note that every limitation or every also support would not have recommendations, may not have recommendations here during this presentation. Our presentation will not be inclusive of all the findings and recommendations, and we encourage you to review the equity audit report. LMP Educational Services was established to help redefine educational communities. Part of our work is to help build-
Can we get, can we get that? So, because it's in the browser and it's half this. Is it possible to get it in Adobe so we can do it in presentation mode and not have to scroll? You can actually go. Sorry, I don't want you to have to worry about trying to scroll.
I think we have as a PDF.
Yeah, you do, it's fine. We should be able to. Just going to do that for a second. Let me just do this.
Jim, I think it's a PDF.
It should be able to.
It's easier, I can just join Zoom and share my screen and do a full screen presentation.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, so he has control of it. No, of course. Lost this here. Where did the Zoom go? There it is. Apologize for technical difficulties. Yeah, but I don't know why it's not popping up. There it is. Just know why it's not giving me the option to change the screen.
I can just share.
I was going to share.
Yeah, but we still need, they need to. Not all of them.
Wait, where's the file?
Do you have it? Is it? Right there. That's the one, that's the one that's open. That's where it should open as, already. Right, so now, so now you're in Adobe, and now you can go to full screen.
So Jim, I just shared it with you via email? Do you have it?
I think we're good now. Yep.
There we go.
Just need to. I gotta go to Zoom. New share. There you go. Now you're good to go. Thanks, Paul.
All right. Yeah, there we go.
Thanks.
All right, great. Thank you. So again, LMP Educational Services was established to help redefine educational communities. Part of our work is helping to build the capacity, confidence, and expertise of educators to teach, lead, and sustain equitable and culturally responsive classrooms and institutions. One of the things that, you know, we have the privilege of doing within LMP is getting to visit amazing districts and amazing leaders. And we have to say that we are so impressed with the leadership here at Ashland. They really leaned into this work, right? This is very hard work, and especially after the pandemic and after kind of the racial tension that we've noticed in our, in our society. And with Mike and Jim, they were really about centering students and really looking at the experience through just equitable and equity lens. So we were very pleased with the leadership, standing with conviction and courage. And during the many months of talking over emails and calling, we, we just have to really commend the leadership for their great work. So a little bit more about LMP Educational Services. We are comprised and consist of educators in K through 12 and also higher education. We have an extensive review experience with a focus on learning and improved outcomes for students. And we are also experienced providers of professional learning towards equity. So for our equity team that worked with the Ashland Public Schools, our team included equity specialists who conducted interviews, focus groups, and examined the data, including policies, curriculum, and achievement data. Our equity team combined has over 80-plus years of experience. We've worked in several districts and with many schools across many states. And now I'm going to pass it on to Mindy to share a little bit about our equity process.
So I want to second Keith's comments on commending the district for taking on this equity audit. We work with many districts across the country, and not all of them are ready to be able to take on this particular task. So truly, congratulations to the district for embarking on this process. Many people want to know, what is an equity audit? What does this process entail? Why do we do this? And so we want to just highlight a few pieces of information with that. So the equity audit process is really designed to enable all levels of educators in the district to truly understand and gain that shared understanding of what the quality of education is that you are offering here in your district in relation to a set of equity standards, so that we can have some of that baseline data to define where we are and where we want to go. Part of this process also includes some self-reflection and some directed practice. We also aim to develop a shared understanding within the school community of the areas that really promote equity and those priorities for improving the experiences of the staff and the students here in the district. And in addition to that, the equity audit process is really designed to enable the district to identify those common patterns of professional practice across the schools and within the district so that our end results of improving outcomes for all can become a reality. So we facilitated this equity audit process using an equity framework. And that framework really addressed these three overarching questions. The first one was, what does the current district data tell us about achievement in the Ashland Public Schools? What factors do staff, students, and the community identify as contributing to that achievement? Whether we are making achievement, we are seeing gains, or we're not? But what's contributing to that? What initiatives at all levels, classroom, school, and the district, can be implemented to build cultural competency and really enhance the schooling experiences for everyone? And that said, one of the main components of this equity audit is this data review. A really deep dive into the data. It's very comprehensive, and I cannot, I would be remiss if I don't thank Mr. Kyra for primarily being responsible for facilitating the collection of all of this data. Just fantastic in doing that. And because we were able to get so much data and documentation, we were able to provide you a really thorough analysis. And so our equity specialists really analyzed achievement data and examined district policies and practices and the different resource allocations that you have available. Some of this included a detailed analysis of various types of data, including student academic performance, enrollment based on tracking, discipline data, attendance data. We looked at some social-emotional components of the district, dropout and graduation rates, involvement in extracurricular activities. And all of the data that we looked at, I should say, just about all of the data was disaggregated by a few different characteristics. We looked at special education status, English learner status. We looked at the data by race, ethnicity, gender, and socioeconomic status. We also reviewed several policies that are in place. We reviewed the school committee policy manual, the employee handbook, and all of the school handbooks as well. In addition to that data, we provided a review of the literature that exists on institutional racism in public education. And certainly, that could have been books and books, right, pages of that. But we just took a snapshot of some of the key pieces, more salient scholarship that's available right now. And that really looked at some of the current strategies and practices that promote or inhibit equity. We also did an assessment of the financial resources. So we looked at the budget and tried to identify how the district is allocating its resources and provide recommendations on best practices on how to equitably fund our schools here in Ashland. There was an examination of targeted intervention supports for these various areas, academic, social, emotional, behavioral needs. And then we also reviewed your family and community engagement practices so that we could provide some recommendations on strategies for creating a truly safe and welcoming environment for all, including our families of color here. Further, we did a pretty comprehensive review of your curriculum to ensure that it was representative of Ashland's diverse community and to provide some recommendations on how to increase that representation within the curriculum. We reviewed efforts to recruit and retain staff of color in order to recommend those steps to improve diverse staff recruitment and retention and provide strategies on how to support the diverse workforce that you aim to have here. And I do want to commend that you'll see in some of our findings that the district has actually done a pretty remarkable job in trying to recruit a diverse workforce, and you'll start to see that more and more within the staff. And lastly here, we really aimed to assess the leadership team's readiness to address institutional racism and equity. And we did that by reviewing some professional development offerings that were related to equity, diversity, and creating schools free of bias, prejudice, and discrimination. An important component of the equity audit process is that stakeholder input, so that we can really understand what folks who are part of this community are experiencing. And so throughout this study, we conducted one-on-one interviews with school and district leaders. We did interviews with curriculum leaders, department chairs, and we had various focus groups, including those with parents and guardians, students, community members, school committee members, administrators, and other school and district leaders. And here you can see the full list of the interviews that we conducted, as well as all of the various focus groups that were held, and then all of the question-and-answer sessions that were held as well.
So during this equity audit, there was four domains that we focused on. We focused on student learning and development outcomes, domain one. Domain two was leadership management and accountability. And domain three was curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And the last domain, domain four, was family and community engagement. The areas of focus were factors that support equity, factors that limit equity, and recommendations. We were going to share just a little bit with you this evening about some of the factors in each of those domains that both support equity and also limit equity, also share some recommendations. And again, when you review the equity audit report, you'll be able to see the more specific findings and recommendations in there as well. So we're going to highlight a few. So one of the things that we found to be really great was the fact that the Ashland Public Schools really took to honoring the different religions, the cultures, the different, what would I say, different backgrounds. Thank you. And that was very important, and that diversity was, that was shared by many of the different stakeholders that we met with. In addition to that, Ashland Public Schools has a very strong team of clinical and social-emotional staff. And you can see here the few folks who work in the district. Factors that support equity also was establishing a direct of social-emotional learning. We also focused, they also focused on curricular investments that not only include materials, but also professional development for staff. So that was really great. And there was also a focus on the implementation of the DEVRO's Student Strengths Assessments, K through 5 and Developmental Relationships Survey, 6 through 12, to monitor SEL data. Some of the factors that limit equity, and I just want to share this. We found some factors that limit equity, but the good thing was that there was already conversations happening within the district about some of these limitations. So part of our examination, and we were most proud of in terms of the leadership and the professional development that was taking place, was that they already saw these as needs for the district and were starting to work on these. So that was something, and even though we are sharing these limitations, it was great to see that the district was already having these conversations. So I'll just name one right now, is that the AHS handbook could be revised so as to explicitly encourage schools and staff to ensure that curriculum and instruction is inclusive, culturally responsive, and meets the needs of different learners. Share another factor that limit equity and excellence in domain one, is that the information about the high school course placement process was only available in English. Some of the recommendations that we provided for domain one was the district would benefit from revisiting its middle school math placement process, develop a proactive and strategic approach to meeting the needs of their English language learner population. And another one was that the district would benefit from employing a unified approach to creating classrooms, schooling, district cultures in which all students felt supported, believed in, and therefore included. So, yes?
I'm just wondering what that means for a unified approach to... That bullet point you were just speaking to, you said that-
The last, the district would benefit from employing a unified approach.
Right, can you talk about what a unified approach means?
So part of through the curriculum development, what we noticed was that the culturally responsive pedagogy that was taking place, the teaching and learning. So we felt across the board, if there was training and professional development taking place, all teachers, all educators will have that training. There will be a unified understanding of what culturally responsive pedagogy looks like.
So expanding what we're doing to everybody.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so when I read that, it, it seems to read that we were talking about our culture, our school culture, as opposed to being culturally responsive. And I think that's what you ended up getting at, is a unified approach to being culturally responsive, not building, not creating a culture in our school.
Correct, yes. Any other questions about those recommendations? All right, domain two is leadership management and accountability. So the district is currently in the early stages of revisiting and updating the strategic plan. School committee members stated, "We are starting the process to revisit the strategic plan with equity goals in mind." So this was really great. So when we talked to many of the leaders across the district, as well as some of the school committee members, what we learned was that this was at the forefront, was at the center of the work. How do we go back to the strategic plan? How do we start creating strategic priorities that really start to benefit not only our students, but our faculty, staff, and our family and community? So that was really great to see as a factor that supports equity. Factor that limits equity, I will share the first one. Although district leaders have discussed a new vision for equity across the district, this vision has not yet been clearly articulated or communicated to all stakeholders. And I'll talk a little bit about the recommendation that we have for the Ashland Public Schools. But we found that part of the work that was happening was this vision for equity, and we wanted to see it in writing, almost to hold us accountable. And I know that Superintendent Adams and others were working on this idea of looking at this equity statement and how does that ground our work in holding us accountable? So one of the recommendations that we did share was looking at creating an equity statement for the district and how would that equity statement drive the work here in Ashland Public Schools. Any questions about domain one and two before we go on to domain three and four? And again, you will be able to see more of the findings in our equity report.
I have a question on the last bullet here, on the weighted course ranking. And maybe, Jim, if you could jump in. We don't do class rank anymore, right? So wouldn't the course weights just really impact the class rank? And therefore, like, I guess, I'm wondering what the impact of the weighted course ranking itself does for the student?
So there are a couple of things. One, we do not report class ranks anymore. It's not that we don't rank students. We actually rank them in deciles, so top 10%, 20%. Because we still have a, two major scholarships that exist in the Ashland Public Schools, the Henry Warren Scholarship. A graduation goes to a valedictorian and salutatorian, and, and it's pretty significant. So we do have to calculate it and, and rank students, if you will. We just don't report that out to colleges. That being said, the way the weighted ranking system, it does work because students are getting higher percentage points for grades at an AP level in an honors course versus a college prep class. The concern that, that we have here is what's equitable in terms of the, the delta between the AP ranking, the honors ranking, and the college prep ranking. And certainly, the high schools in the process, we actually had a conversation today. They're in the process of, of looking at CP1, CP2, so college prep one and college prep two, the, the net differential. And it's important because when we're looking at equitable outcomes, and the reason we don't report rankings is you can actually have a .001 percentage point of a student and who might be ranked fifth versus someone who's ranked second. So that's why we actually got rid of that component of it. And if I could ever get the papers on the Henry Warren Scholarship and actually look at specifically how it's defined, because we don't actually have that work. It's held by a trustee in Holliston. We might be able to actually reduce the valedictorian and salutatorian component as well. So it's not just based on academic achievement. Does that help, Erin?
Sorry, yes, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I was going to just ask one just on the second bullet point about the human resource webpage lacks clarity around hiring educators of color. And I'm wondering, what, what kind of statement or content have you recommended elsewhere in terms of how to address that?
Yeah, so usually, we recommend an equity statement that's just, that talks about the inclusiveness of all, right? And that we, as a public school, we embrace differences, we respect differences, and including, including that in part of the job description. Usually, it comes within an overview. So when you talk about all the great work that's happening at Ashland Public Schools, Ashland Public Schools, you know, is, you know, rich with education resources and all these things. Having that statement, that equity statement about inclusivity is so important. And it's making it very explicit, yeah.
So from that perspective, it would be like a replacement for that generic-
Equal opportunity employer kind of thing, but something that, that is on there that, that is the equity, basically is the equity statement. Yeah, I think it really speaks to the heart of Ashland. You know, I, you know, when we met with leadership about this work, it was all about understanding the changes that was happening within the student population, families that were coming into the Ashland community, right? There's something to say about when you start to center and look at all students and what that means. So really taking that heart of Ashland and making sure that's part of who we are, and that's very explicitly explained in a job description statement. Because most folks, when you look at diversity, will see Ashland Public Schools as a, you know, predominantly white community. But the work that's happening in terms of changes, especially as it relates to DEI and equity being, you know, at the center and focus, that would really, I think, push out and really encourage others to apply. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to domain three and four.
So for domain three, we focused on curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And it was very clear to us that all of the curriculum was aligned to standards, state standards, Common Core standards. We saw that with the elementary and middle school science courses. Those were all very clearly aligned to the Massachusetts frameworks. We saw some of the units that were part of the English Language Arts. Specifically, we happen to mention here, Lucy Colkins, definitely aligned to Common Core. So some great, great work in terms of the alignment, which was fantastic to see. We also saw that just about every single unit was created using an understanding, understanding by design framework, which also is very supportive of the standards alignment. So that was a great strength of the district. At the high school, certainly a variety of core academic courses at the honors and advanced placement levels. Many, many different options for students to take from calculus, statistics, computer science, biology, environmental science. It was really across the board in all subject areas. And there was a really nice offering, menu of offerings for electives as well. So we mentioned just a few of them here. Mathematics of Investing, Web Design, Game Design, App Design, Robotics. Really some unique and creative options for students to be able to take as electives there at the high school. Definitely want to identify or highlight the strength where the report cards were all really standards-based. That, that's impressive to see that. So elementary report cards, they had both the content standards and practice standards. We happen to say mathematics here. And then the elementary literacy report card And then the elementary literacy report card were also standards aligned. So that was terrific. And to close this piece here on curriculum instruction and assessment, there was quite a bit of professional development offered that we saw for teachers in a variety of different areas, primarily around content-based learning, book studies, movie discussions, and a pretty robust offering already on DEI training. And so all of that matters because the learning that they take will then, you hope, transfer into the classroom and affect teacher practice so that the curriculum instruction and assessment opportunities our students are experiencing are all through this equity lens. So that PD was really great. And just in terms of the budget and how it relates to curriculum instruction assessment, there was a very clear commitment to supporting curricular needs and diverse student groups in terms of what they might need, in terms of a learning experience, a teaching and learning experience here in the district. And we saw that primarily with the English learners, and I know that the district has experienced a rather growth in that area. And so it was really nice to see that the district identified resources to hire a director of English learning. And also, quite a bit of funding we saw towards special education to really support those curricular needs for students in special ed as well. Couple of factors that limit equity and excellence as it pertains to curriculum instruction and assessment. So this was reported by a number of the stakeholders that we met with, that the taught curriculum in schools is not yet culturally responsive to the community of students being served. And we really want to emphasize that yet piece because it was clear that it was on their minds, it was clear that they've started getting some of this professional development, so they're thinking about it. They need some additional support to make it all happen and put it into practice, but the idea is there, and so we want to continue to move so that the taught curriculum will become fully culturally responsive. Another factor that limits equity here was that students and staff groups share that the district feels like it's not meeting all student needs. And that was primarily focused on our English learners, and that could be a result of just the growth that you have experienced so quickly. And so we have that listed here as a limitation, but also really want to recognize the work that's already been done to begin to address this particular area. There was evidence of little discussion of data as a means of reviewing policy that perhaps could really impact student outcomes as it related to curriculum and instruction. So what are the experiences that students are having related to teaching and learning so that we can look at what that data is telling us and hopefully have an impact on students?
Could you elaborate a little bit on that, perhaps, of sort of what types of data might be there that we're not using or could be using better, just to give an illustration?
Sure. So I think when you look at your curriculum, for example, and we're looking at it from an equity lens, for representation free of bias, different perspectives, how do teachers actually know? What is the data that we have to know whether all of our curriculum materials are doing just that? And most of the teachers said, we're not really sure what to look for. We just don't have that data, we don't know what it is that we're looking for to be able to know if this curriculum is really meeting the needs of all students and is it yielding the impacts, the outcomes that we want it to have? So that's one piece of data. It can also look at the achievement data that students have, the dropout data, right? So that if students are feeling like they're not getting a representative experience when they're in class, they may not want to be sitting in that classroom. So we want to look at what those students' experiences are as well. So data is very broad here. You can really look at just about any piece of data to help us measure whether or not the policies, the practices, the pedagogical skills that we're using are yielding those student outcomes that we want to have.
So there's not necessarily sort of a set of prescribed or recommended data points to look at as much as just trying to figure out what we should be looking at?
Yeah, I mean, we always, yeah, we do say that some of that achievement data is really helpful, especially if you can disaggregate that by race, ethnicity, and gender, that's going to be really, really helpful. And some of that's included in the report so that you can see what the individual experiences are for these student groups and the curriculum. Students are exposed to both the taught curriculum and the hidden curriculum for six-plus hours a day. What is that experience like for our students? What is it that they are taking away? What is that teaching and learning like? So what data do we have to reflect that? So those are the two areas we typically tell you to look at, look at that achievement data and look at that curriculum, because that's going to tell us a lot about the student experience.
And I assume in this bullet, the term policy is used in the most broad sense of all the different things you're talking about, not, because...
District policy.
Right. With this group, we own the policies, right? So, and not handbooks, not those things that are more administration and staff, so...
But staff did report back that they would like opportunities to be able to discuss some of these policies. How do we get the input from staff? Many of them did share that with us.
Right, right. When I talk about policy, I'm talking about like our school committee policies as opposed to a policy being an umbrella for all the different directions.
That's correct, yes. Yeah. So maybe practices could be a more broader term that people might speak to.
Yeah, so that's where my mind was when I read that bullet, I'm like, what are we supposed to be doing? Because I'm also the chair of the policy subcommittee, so I'm like, I didn't know what that meant, relative to what I'm supposed to be doing, so, but I think it's good to get the context that you're talking, maybe a better word is practice.
The practices, yeah, you can think of it as practices as well. Thanks for bringing that up, yeah. The piece that had a lot of conversation was really around this math placement from grade five to middle school. And so I do know that the district is very well aware of this and that there are already actions in place to be able to address this. And so we did highlight that here because it was talked about among every single stakeholder group. And also, the middle and the high school report cards are not standards based yet, and that's something that we would recommend that you consider. So a few high leverage recommendations is really looking to diversify those, the texts, the materials that students have in their curricular experiences. We did do a study of the different authors, race, and gender in the high school texts, and it was just really fascinating to see the domination with really being white authors and male. So we would just encourage you to really think about diversifying that. Looking at the district's report cards, which we talked about in terms of being all standards based, we talked about diversifying the honors courses offered to senior students, so it seems that senior students have limited access to some of those honors courses, and that may be, I don't know if that's because of the scheduling or how that works, but there is something getting in the way of why our seniors aren't getting as much access to honors courses that are available at the high school. And to continue to do that targeted professional development instructional supports for English learners, given that it's such a high-growing group here, we want to make sure that we do that. Domain four, focused on family and community engagement. This was certainly an area of strength for the district. So the leadership really does a nice job collaborating with some different organizations here in the community. Two that we highlighted were social justice alliances, one was called Ashland is United, and the other one was Ashland Residents for Equity and Action, and both spoke very positively. The relationship seems to be a pretty healthy, positive relationship, and they looked forward to that continued collaboration. We also identify that there's been a closer affiliation, more intentional effort to really collaborate with the Ashland Public Library, in which more culturally relevant books in all different languages are being added to the catalog so that families have access to more diversified collection of materials. I want to repeat this piece because this was really critical, that the district has a Director of Counseling and Social Emotional Learning. Their website was fantastic, and it included a lot of information for the community, and the stakeholder groups for the community actually mentioned this website. So folks are visiting it and are aware of it. And I would encourage you to continue to market it because it seems to be fairly useful for everyone that was accessing it. The Public Schools has increased human resources to support the district's growing English learner population. And again, I just want to highlight that hire of the Director of English Learning, which is a major step in really being able to support this particular group, to have someone who can sort of oversee and facilitate the needs of what that community is. The Ashland Parent Information Guide indicates that parents are encouraged to participate in partnership with Ashland Public Schools via membership in all kinds of different organizations. So to know that you openly welcome and invite your community in was really nice to see. Couple of factors that limit, so although you've begun all of this really great work with these community groups and building those stronger relationships, we did not find any sort of like codified plans for family and community engagement. So perhaps that's an area that we might want to focus on because there wasn't any formal plan really on how we're going to address family and community engagement. Not to take away from all of the different pockets that we did find, those were really great. Student feedback is not formally used by the district. A lot of our students said they don't usually get asked about their experiences, what equity means to them, how they're treated, things like that. And so they were really appreciative of that opportunity, but we would encourage you to really think about how do we get student feedback? How do we get that student voice represented more in the district?
Like I'm muted, right? Sort of. Yeah. So is that comment kind of focused on the issue of equity? Or is it presented as a broader kind of, we're not engaging students at all?
During the student focus groups, they were not able to share with us opportunities that they have had to give their voice on how they feel matters are run, things are happening, their experiences in the district.
And do you have a sense of, from those conversations, about the types of areas where they feel like they should be consulted or they'd want to be consulted and have input?
I mean, I think that's an open, sort of an open book for that, right? There are so many different areas where our student voice matters. And so whether you want to begin with what courses, what the school experience is like for them, what are the electives, or what are the different learning opportunities that they have? What's available for extracurricular activities? What is it that they want to do with their time to make sure that they're represented? How they're being treated in the school? We look at disparate treatment, a lot of kids talked about that, where they felt that certain students were treated differently than others. So they had a lot to say about a lot of different areas, to be honest. And most students, they don't hesitate to sort of share their truth, right? And their truth really, really matters, we're here for the students. So I think you could really start anywhere and find it really valuable to hear from.
So maybe even like a year-end survey with some things we want to find out, but also maybe a free-form feedback section of it that would provide us at least a starting point, maybe.
Okay. And then the focus groups that we had, the parent community members, they did recognize a lack of parental engagement. And so we wanted to really just bring that to your attention to see how can we do a better job of engaging students, excuse me, the parents and the community in the district?
So this is something that I always bring up, and I always ask people, and I think I might have asked it in the summer at the retreat. So we talk about this a lot, and we seem to be in a society of disengagement right now, right? We have over 11,000 registered voters, we go to town meeting, we're lucky to get 100 people to show up, right? And so having external parties come in that see this in different places, how do we know whether we're doing a good job or not? Or whether this is a problem? Maybe we're doing fantastic, we think everybody should be engaged more, but, you know, I can't take how I think you should be engaged as a parent and tell you you need to be engaged at that level, right? To give an example, we were building a new elementary school, so Mendez is being replaced. We've held lots of forums. I don't think I ever got onto the secondhand of how many parents really showed up to those. But when we had a special time where they had to wait in line to vote at a special town meeting and a special ballot, we had over 1,700 show up, right? So how do we know that, because we can, I can open the door, I can make it, I can dance outside the door, I can put lights on it. They might not want to walk through it, or they might just trust us, or I don't know what the answers are, but how are we to measure this and stop just talking about it? We talk about it like we're not doing enough? I think it's always something, it's continuous improvement, but I don't know how we objectively know how we're doing, right? And I don't know whether we are doing a great job or not doing a great job, and this is something we talk about all the time. And I don't know how to quantify where we are, right? We might be doing a fantastic job, might be doing better than everybody else, or might be tanking. I don't know how to do that, and I don't know if you have any insight or thoughts on that.
I think it's definitely about what are ways that we are providing that feedback, right? So are there surveys? Are there open forums? And not just to come to meetings, but to say, hey, we just want to hear from you, here's an opportunity for you to come and talk to us. So as much as you can do that, you know, hopefully you will receive some feedback that will be helpful, but also understanding too, the, just where we are as, you know, I'm a dad of two, and, you know, coming home at five, six o'clock and having a meeting, you know, when, you know, I have to be home taking my son to basketball or going to see my daughter play, that's hard. So are we opening up times not just during the week, but what about the weekends? Are we providing opportunities for like morning, afternoon, and evening options? So I think we have to start exploring all those different options, but also hearing from our parents, hearing from our families to say, you know, do we need to come to you? You know, can our parents access transportation to get to town hall? I am not too familiar with, you know, how large Ashland community is, but are there areas in which we can go to? So I think all those things matter, and if you start putting more of those things out, you might get some feedback that might help or might not, right? But I think if those forums, those conversations...
Well, and that's what I'm trying to, because we've talked about this for years, and we try different things. I can, I'm trying to remember what, we had, we held virtual meetings, and I remember that being on them with Jim, where they were kind of open, and we'd literally get one person. And it's one person that, you know, is one of the groups, community groups that we're already engaged with. So it's like the same 10 people, right? We're not, so we've tried it on virtual, we've tried, we've tried a bunch of things. I'm not saying we've exhausted the list, but we have tried and tried. In town meeting, we now get our rec department to offer childcare services, right? So parents of young kids can come, at least for, and it doesn't seem to, so, trying to understand how, not only get more ideas on what we can try, but even evaluate where we are, right?
And I think we're starting to think outside the box with the new family engagement opportunities for our EL students and, you know, kind of the offering pizza and different things, you know, kind of to find ways to bring people together that we haven't thought of before. And if we think of one new idea a year, maybe that's baby steps and we're getting there and kind of throwing spaghetti at the wall to find ways to get people through the door, but...
You know, so we worked with one district that decided to do a social, right? Just an opportunity for families to come out, socialize and network, which was so cool. The first like 45 minutes, an hour, they got a chance to talk about some of the different initiatives and stuff that was going on in the district. So parents saw that as an opportunity to network with other families, other parents, had an opportunity to just kick back, don't bring the kids, come out, socialize. And it was like a very cool way of also saying, we're going to socialize, but we're also going to talk some business in terms of our schools. So like you said, thinking outside the box and making it, you know, fun for parents as well, I think would be another option.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, we need to also think about engagement broadly, right? Engagement is just not about the numbers that show up, but families could be engaging by checking out what's on the website, reading the information that students are bringing home, asking questions, emailing the teacher. There's so many different ways that families can be engaged, and one way may not work, or all ways may not work for one family, right? So I would encourage us just to think about it really broadly, and that's why it's really hard to actually measure how well we're doing, because engagement looks different across the board, right? One of the things, or just an idea that we have seen work really, really well in a couple of different districts, is this idea of having like these room parents or department parents, where the parent then sort of like either sends out an email, a personal email, or makes phone calls to get parents to come. And that's often built on like a relational trust, where it's someone like, I really have this personal connection, and she's asking me to attend this meeting tonight, I want to bring her. That buddy system works really well, invite somebody to come. You can also try all of these things and it not matter, right? But we would just encourage you to keep trying, it sounds like you're already doing some really great things. And maybe at some point, it might be helpful to do some kind of like satisfaction survey with the families, because maybe they're feeling like they are engaged in different ways, and you can better understand what those forms of engagement are and what they look like, and maybe identify what are the areas of the types of engagement we're not doing as well in. You know, maybe email communication is working really, really well for families. Maybe those open forums are not working so well, so why put so many resources towards that, you know?
We'll be getting more, we'll be getting better data on that because we've standardized on our email communication, which I'm assuming is better tracked with, you know, image downloads and different things, they'll be able to tell that, you know, what that engagement looks like, so.
We've surveyed some of that too. We've surveyed some of that too within the last years, last spring.
But I also think a piece of it too, I know in our district, just as a parent, there's a huge, or there has been, and I think it probably fell off a little bit during COVID, a huge sense of community, particularly in our elementary schools, and the different opportunities for literacy night or different fun activities that you just come to with your kids. So I think kind of broadening the view of engagement isn't just us as a committee talking to parents or the administrators talking to parents, but that sense of community, so they feel a part of and want to be more involved in the school. I mean, I don't have kids in elementary school anymore, I'm guessing that that feeling may be a little different now because we've been more isolated during COVID, but I think it's starting to pick back up. And so hopefully it will continue to grow so that that community feeling really comes back.
And you touched on it, Mindy, but I think it is like maybe important for us to really, because it is so difficult to measure, because I think engagement means so many different things to different people. Like there can be people that are entirely satisfied, they're really only worried about their own child. So as long as they're getting good communication from their teacher and they understand that their kid's doing well, they don't, I don't want to say they don't care what else is happening, but they have other priorities in their life, they're going to their kid's basketball game at night instead of coming to a social. There might be some other people who are looking to meet other parents of second graders or who are looking to meet other parents in their cultural community. And so there are so many different layers and like nuances to it that, like, I don't know how you measure it other than just asking the general question, like, do you feel like your needs are being met as a resident of this community? You know? And if not, you know, what's missing? Is it more social? You know, because some of these things that we keep doing, if people aren't attending, and it's not necessarily all about the numbers, if it helps the few people that are coming, that's great. But if what people are looking for is something entirely different, then that's where the out-of-the-box stuff comes from. And, you know, and also I think for us to not feel like we're failures because we don't know what satisfaction means to every single person in the community, you know? But I think to your point even about not hearing student voices on certain things, like how are we going to know what the satisfaction level is if we're not asking?
I think there's an ultimate challenge in this, is that it's very hard to define even what your goal is, right? I mean, you were to say, we've achieved that goal, right? Like, I don't even know how to describe that.
That's the quantification I mentioned, right?
Right.
It's not a measurable thing necessarily.
Yeah, you can have a metric, but you can't have like the outcome of like, we're there, everybody's happy.
But kind of thinking about as we're building those communities, like I was talking, I mean, this is just one example in my head, like, as we're building those communities in the elementary schools, in all of our schools really, to make sure that they are inclusive, that they're welcoming, that all of our parents, whether they choose to engage in those communities or not, feel like they... feel like they can, right? And so thinking, ma- making sure that, that, and I don't know a hundred percent how to measure that, but like thinking through, you know, that is an objective.
I think there's some basic like bullet points that we have to cover when we're trying to engage, like making sure it's welcoming, making sure that the message got out to everybody, making sure we're trying different things that appeal to different. But then at the end of the day too, like it doesn't necessarily mean that we're failing. And I, I've said this over the years many times, you've heard me say it, like I do know people who are, you know, choosing to be very much engaged in other parts of their life, and it's not a priority for them to show up at school events. And it doesn't mean they're doing anything wrong, and it doesn't mean we're doing anything wrong.
It might be that we're doing things right and they don't feel that this needs to be something that they're spending their time on. But that's kind of the reason why, you know, for us, we talk about it a lot. We spend a lot of time talking about it and we spend time and resources focused on this. And I want to make sure we're striking the right balance in that if we're, need to dig ourselves out of a hole in this space, we need to, we need to spend a lot of time and resources on it. But if we're on the right trajectory, we're doing kind of the right things, we're, you know, we need to spend those time and, that time and energy and resources on higher priority things. And so trying to understand where we are is like, how do you know you're spending the right amount of resource, time and energy and resources on this particular thing as opposed to whatever other thing of the, you know, many other priorities we ha- we have as a district with our limited resources, right? So, and I, like I said, I don't know if there's an answer, I, I ask anybody that, that comes before us and we talk about this, because you see more than Ashland and we, maybe we see a couple, uh, communities around us, but you'll see a, a broader, you know, basis to, to judge us on and whether we're, you know, whether it's, should be something high on the priority list of like, hey, you really need to do a lot better and, and devote more resources. Or, hey, you know, the amount of resources, just continually trying new things and, and trying to find new ways to evaluate our success is enough, right? So.
I think it's a lot like, you know, what COVID has done to us, right? Allowed us to think outside the box, right? Allowed us now to be on Zoom and we stay muted all the time. We don't even know, we're still going through that process, right? So I think, so I think that's very similar to where we are now, just the way we need to kind of rethink about school. In a way we, you know, engage with our families and our students. What are the, some of the things that they want to see different? But like you said, you, it's, it's always trying, right? This is, is ongoing work, um, and I think that's what makes it so fun to be an educator as well and sitting in those seats is that every new, every day is just a new opportunity, a new challenge for us to engage more, to support our students. But it's important that we do that and it's important that even going back to the students and say, hey, like, what do you need from us? Because a lot what the students need, you know, too, may also reflect that of the parents. So using both, um, and in that case.
Yeah, so we'll just close. This was actually aligned a lot to what you just said, but one of the recommendations that came from this specific domain was around increased translation so that parents could access more of the information being shared with the community. And then I would also encourage you, and I know we both do, is to really kind of check in with some of your neighboring districts who may be experiencing some of the same populations of students. So I know some of your neighbors right here have similar communities of students and I know some of the things that they're doing, um, I haven't heard being done here yet, but for example, I, I do know, uh, one of your neighboring districts, they do a lot of their parent meetings right after mass, because so many of the families go to mass and then they have, hold a meeting right after that because they get a large group of people. So even just kind of, on a Sunday, mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, exactly, yeah. So sometimes it's meeting families where they are to really understand sort of the cultural components and the factors of what these families need. But, um, my point is saying that sometimes checking in with neighboring districts might help, uh, identify some different strategies that they're using. That might be helpful here as well, so. But everyone here is, you know, we, we just cannot emphasize again how impressed we are with the commitment, that you have been doing a tremendous amount of work and we see that, it is evident, and the commitment to continue to do more is also real. So we really appreciate that, congratulate you, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
And, and not just because you said the nice things, but the work you did.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything further for, uh, Mindy and Keith before they, they head out?
I guess just one very broad question and it's sort of, yeah, so where, where do we go from here? I don't know if that's a question to you, to you folks or, um, to Jim and the committee. And obviously if it's the committee, I guess it's a future discussion point, but you've given us a set of recommendations. Presumably we have to talk about what to do with those recommendations, but I mean, is that where we leave off? Is there another step in your work with us? Or is this like you're saying, thanks, it's been nice and, you know, good luck?
We told you what to do, now go do it.
So, one, we are always going to be part of the Ashland community, right? So we're always going to, we, we've taken those many months of working with your students, your leadership. Um, so we are always here, um, you know, coming up ninety, it's okay with us, right? Right up the street. But what I think is important is this, I've been in education now for nineteen years, right? One of the things I've always said is like, it takes really good leaders to really lead good districts. But it also takes the school committee to back great leaders. And to understand that when they stand with conviction and courage, we have to support that in such a way that they can continue to move the needle forward. This is heavy lifting, you know, eighteen years being K through twelve, now moved out, I'm in higher ed now full, full time. But, um, I think that's where we start too. It's like, we have to support the leaders, have to support the staff. And there's a big piece that we talked a little bit about during our retreat is around the social emotional, um, support for our leaders, social emotional support for our staff. We are in different times and that is so needed. So that's the one piece that I would say like, we have to stay true to and we will always be here. We will always help, um, and anything that you all need from us, I'll pass it over.
Yeah, I, I echo that, um, for sure. I certainly echo that. But if you're looking for a concrete next step, one of the recommendations we would make is to think about establishing an equity plan, right? Coming up with this equity framework so that you can now look at these four domains and identify within each of these domains, what are the two or three things we are going to work on? And almost approach it like a strategic plan. So if this is what we want to work on, how will we measure our success with that? And what steps do we need to take to be able to achieve that specific metric? And that's going to take a bit of work, right? But there are frameworks out there, we've done them with other districts, there are these plans that exist, but it provides you with a, a map in terms of what steps to take. You can't tackle all of this at one time, that's just impossible, right? But if you come up with this framework, this plan, and then identify within each of these domains, the specific areas you want to target and identify how are we going to do that? And then how will we know we have met those specific areas? I think you're going to find that you have that roadmap that you need to actually see some of the progress and the impact on those next steps.
And I would just add to that, the, the whole point of institutionalizing it. So once you create those, that strategic plan and those strategic priorities and you have set, met some of those goals and objectives, how do you sustain it? Because you can't just stop it there and then continue something else and like, oh, we're not still doing good here, we got to go back to it. So how do we institutionalize it? How do you sustain the work? So that, once you got this strategic priority down, what's the next one? And you're continuing to build on each of those priorities.
Yeah, one, one of the things I was gonna, uh, gonna ask, uh, in, in two, in two places, because you mentioned, you know, vision statements and stuff like that. We already, actually already, uh, finalized our, our new vision statement, so I don't know if that's been shared with you. But also, when we do complete our strategic planning, um, is that something that we can, you know, have you review? Whether it's, you know, getting for, informal feedback, even just to, to get that, that, look at that, to see if there's anything in there that, uh, you know, makes you raise an eyebrow or, or, or that you really, really think is important or, or anything like that. I think that would be, uh, good to have, uh, another set of eyes that, with that lens on, on there to, to do that, so.
Yep, more than happy to help.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Have a good break too.
Yeah. Have a good night. Happy New Year, happy holidays. All right, folks, um, next up, we have nutrition services and facility substitute daily rate. Chris.
Hello.
Hello, down there. Yeah.
Wrong muted.
So we're looking to, uh, increase the facilities and nutrition services rate, um, sixteen dollars an hour from, um, fourteen twenty-five. From a financial perspective, uh, we can handle that within our existing resources. It's what we consider, uh, what, what the market is, you know, loo- looking for right now.
I, I assume we're having a hard time finding subs?
I would say that's a valid statement, yes.
That's going to be my next question. Same reason why we had to make adjustments in other areas, right? Yeah, right, yeah.
And I think, you know, we've spoken about a few of our other groups, so this should be the, the, the last, uh, right now that we, uh, we have to, to chat through.
What's the relationship between this sub rate and, you know, what we pay the employees doing this work? As compared to sort of the same question when we've looked at
Right.
subs for teachers versus a teacher rate or pairs or what have you?
It's a good question and we've had a lot of discussion on that internally. For nutrition, it's essentially equal to the step one rate. And facilities, it's probably three dollars differential.
Above or below?
I apologize, below.
Is anyone having any concerns about it? I'm fine with it. It needs to be done. You're recommending it, we can afford it.
Yeah, so I would move to approve the hourly substitute rate for facility and nutrition substitutes, uh, from fourteen twenty-five to sixteen dollars an hour.
Second.
Second.
Thanks, Aaron.
Sorry.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul? Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Next up, we have unified basketball coaches stipend for high school and middle school. Is that you, you also, Chris? You're the money guy.
So, first of all, this one actually won't cost the district money because the Special Olympics has a grant that they provide for each of these. There's two groups, one at the middle school, one at the high school for basketball. The recommendation is to establish a stipend. I have it in my head, I just wanted to make sure the right, the, the, uh,
Fourteen twenty-nine.
Yep, fourteen twenty-nine, and I believe the other one is five hundred dollars, um, due to lesser events at the, uh, middle school level.
That's, I assume we're just voting on this because we're putting in the CBA or you got an MOA with the union?
Yeah, there's an MOA in our, in our, in our packet.
Yeah, turn my mic on, yes, an MOA with the union. And, and again, I, I think although it's funded currently through, you know, um, the, the grants that exist, I mean, we want to make sure we memorialize it just in case someday down the road, that, that funding doesn't exist, so. And, and for those who have, you know, went and attended those events, we know it's well worth, uh, and they're going to start at the middle school in the spring. That'd be great.
That's great. I still, I still don't like the article XX. Seems like we, we, we still need to fill that in.
Yeah.
Every time I read that, I'm like, oh, no, no, there is an article XX in the, in the contract.
Oh, I apologize, I never, I never caught that. I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that for the next one.
No, no, no. The first, the first time I, I, I saw it, I'm like.
Article twenty.
I'll move to approve the unified basketball coaching stipends for high school and middle school as presented.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Tina? Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Student activities bank reconciliations. Also you, Chris?
This is the, uh, the standard quarterly reconciliation. I review monthly and sign off on it monthly and then we present it to you on a quarterly basis. I don't have anything of a need you to discuss, that's not business as usual. Everything reconciles and comfortable with, with the accounts.
Excellent. Any questions or concerns? No? Motion?
Move to provide, uh, to approve the student activities bank reconciliations as presented.
Second.
And then all in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. That passes and approval of policies, uh, I'm sure.
I'll, I'll hand it over to Jim.
He doesn't want to be the chair anymore, huh?
Yeah.
No, so.
This is, this is all these, Jim.
Yeah, so when, when we're looking at the policies, again, just like we did at the last meeting, uh, MASC recommendations, uh, so a lot of strike throughs, I'll, I'll pull it up on, on, uh, the shared screen here. The one thing I do want to bring to your attention, um, policy DD, which is letter G, and policy DJA, DGA, not letter I, and DJE, letter O, are not being presented tonight. Uh, we're, we're working through some, some language there.
Okay.
So those are not on the packet that I did send out, um, and they're not going to be presented tonight.
Are those listed on the agenda?
Yeah, they were listed on the agenda, but we're not ready to, to, to share them.
So as long as somebody's got that one, we get to a motion, right?
Right, correct, yeah, I've circled them. So again, as we go through the fiscal management policies, there, there were a few iterations that came from MASC and recommendations from August of twenty-one through, um, August of twenty-two. There were a few things that, that we were looking at. And there's nothing really in here that, um, stands out in terms of, of being glaring. Chris and I went through them and then the policy subcommittee went through them. I'm just going to share a few of them. You can see, oh, where'd it go?
We've, we've, I think we've all had the chance.
Yeah. You've all had the chance to read them. I'm just giving you an idea of, I'll give you an example, though, the first one, I think it's important. Like fiscal management goals, they took the first paragraph, moved it to make it the second paragraph. There were literally just word changes, uh, making sure that, uh, pronouns were appropriate, uh, looking at referencing, uh, any new, uh, laws that came, came about, uh, within the policies. Also, the policies wanted to ensure that if you have local, um, standards, for instance, like budget planning and, and processing, that you accounted for that within, um, within your policy, which we have done. Procurement is the one that you're not seeing there because there was a new, uh, law that was passed, but MASC did not update their policy, um, to reflect that yet. So I have written to MASC asking how they are viewing the hundred thousand dollar limitation, uh, versus the fifty thousand that was procurement.
Hopefully they're removing the, removing it and not just updating it, yeah.
So, um, so that's really, um, you know, that's all we did. We looked at and, and adjusted it to be in alignment with MASC language.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Just to make sure that I understand the wording. A couple of these were updated, um, talking about the budget process and the cost center was used. Can you just define what that means?
Sure, so, and you'll see it more when we present the budget this year. All, the cost center to us is that it's broken out easily readable if a family, layperson wants to look at the budget and say, here's the Mendez school, this is what it costs to, to run the Mendez school. You've got your salaries, you've got your supplies, you've got everything allocated towards Mendez. Then you've got Ashland High School as a cost center, you've got director of, um, finance is a cost center. So it's all broken out based on specific facilities. So those are cost centers. And what we like to do, what I like to do with the cost centers is look, look for equity, right? I mean, that's a, that's a lens that we've started looking at, is that we've got three buildings, uh, that have the same number of grades and almost the same number of students for the most part, right? Between, you know, Warren Middle and Mendez. What, where are we spending our funds?
Are we updating the curriculum and the, you know, buildings equally?
What are we doing in terms of the monies we're spending?
Supporting staff.
Everyone always wants to look at the high school. Well, you spend more money at the high school. We have four grades at the high school. There are more teachers at the high school.
Right.
It's a, it's a different animal, right? So, so that's all cost centers mean.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
But nothing, uh, changed in any significant way based on, you know, the prior policy. It's just, you know, when MASC does their review, they change some language around. And then anything that we had any, you know, if we flagged something, then, or we want to rewrite it differently for Ashland, then we would point that out to you and it would come to this committee as a new policy and it would go through the process of first reading, second reading. But when we're, um, just changing some language that doesn't really change the, the, the real meeting, it's.
And, and Jim struggled with that.
I do.
Uh, as, as I do all the time, but, because he, he wanted to change some of these, but then it's, you know, the, that value proposition of, it doesn't make sense to maintain our, uh, our own version of it. Therefore, how do we, you know, easily track changes and updates from MASC? If it's, if the effect isn't the same, but we didn't want to make it more readable, same thing I always struggle with too. Some of them are, are just not written as well as we'd like, but, uh, but none. So all the ones we're voting on tonight are, are not substantive changes.
But at the end of the day, it's our policy, so if, if, if it rolls around someday, that it does make more sense to have it seen in our way.
We've certainly done it. We've certainly done it both ways.
We always have the right to do that, just so you know. So if anybody does have any serious, I mean, this policy, this committee doesn't have to approve anything just because MASC sent us a correction, so.
Or, or, or that, or that the, uh, the subcommittee also, you know, wanted to go.
Exactly. So at the end of the day, we are still, you know, responsible for the policy. So, if any policy is ever a concern for a member, we can put that on a list to review.
They all looked reasonable to me.
So, given there's nothing substantive here, it seems like we could make a motion to approve the policies as a group, but I just want to make sure that I retained which ones are not taking up tonight off of the agenda.
Yep.
So, which were those that we were not doing again?
DD, policy DD, policy DGA, and policy DJE are not.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the following policies. And catch me when I screw it up. Policy DA, DB, DBC, DBD, DBG, DBJ, DEC, DH, DI. Am I skipping DIE?
No, DIE is.
DIE is included.
DIE, DJ, not.
Not the next two.
Not the next two. DK and DKC.
Correct.
All in favor, Aaron? I see your head shaking, so I'm, thumbs up, yes?
Yes, aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent. Do we have a superintendent's update?
We do, very, oh, yeah, very brief. Last night, I'll just go back to the information within the equity audit. There's a lot of really good work that's going on already. You know, you can't, people at home can't see it, but all these little purple marks are like where the recommendations have been and things that we're already underway in a lot of the stuff. And one of the things last night, which was really exciting, although, again, engagement and representation, we had our first community connection tonight. And those are the folks that we've written to, asked our non-English speakers at home if they want to participate with us and help us be translators at events coming up. And so, Christie and Esmer and myself and Mike, last night, met with two parents, but we had three on at one point, and I think once we started introducing each other, someone felt a little nervous, but that group, and we have seventeen, I think, signed up to participate. All languages, you name it, we have it covered. And the goal of that, as we talked about last night, is really to help our families who move into our district have someone they can speak with about things that are happening within the district, how to do something within the school system, where to go find a resource if they need it. And it's gonna be exciting. It's, you know, we felt as though, while only a couple of people showed up last night, that it's a good start for us. And then on January tenth, at six o'clock, we're having our first event, a family night for our English learner families and parents. At the high school, it's six PM, and more details will be forthcoming to those families. It's a very specific invite to those families at this point in time. Kelly's gonna work with NHS and student government to have childcare, you know, and we'll provide pizza and really just have an opportunity to come together to talk about the schools and try to get more families into our schools and to start that engagement process, right? And, you know, we plan to run three or four of these a year and then relying upon the community connections folks to help us identify ways to reach, you know, the English learner population. So, it's pretty exciting. I think we all felt pretty energized about it last night. And, you know, we're working hard at it. And Esmer and Christie are really focused on the outreach component, and so we'll go from there. Other than that, we're coming up on break. It's been a long stretch for a lot of people. It's twenty straight days, which is amazing, that we're able to actually put in four solid weeks of academics. But you can see that first week, when they come back from Thanksgiving, it's sort of like a roller coaster of emotions for kids because they're such time off. And then after this past week, end of last week and early this week, as we toured the schools, it's a little bit calmer, but it'll ramp up again next week as people get ready to take some time off. But the budget process is going well. We had an entire day today of admin team in my office where we hashed out a lot of the budget and lots of, I'd say spirited discussions.
Colorful conversation.
Yeah, there was probably some colorful language, but spirited. And I think we're moving in a really good direction. Chris, correct me if you think.
I agree completely.
I think we're moving in a good direction. I've got a meeting with Michael Herbert on January fourth, when we come back from break, to really sit down and have a conversation of, again, the global view of the budget for the town and not just the schools. But I'll be upfront, we are concerned. I'm concerned when we're looking at our facilities and maintenance folks and where they're going to end up after the Mendez building is torn down. It's a really significant hurdle that we have to overcome. And, you know, we're having conversations about areas within town that we can use, and some aren't coming to fruition that we had wanted. But that being said, I know Michael and I have such a good relationship. We'll figure something out for our folks. But we need, and we need space for trucks. We need space to work on small engines, things of that nature, and we don't have any space.
Old fire stations flying around, right?
Well, yeah.
Soon to be old fire stations, I should say.
So, those are just, you know, important things. And then, obviously, Paul will touch base, Mendez project, you know, I do, I dread my Tuesday mornings, but I look forward to my Tuesday mornings, and Paul can attest to that, right? You know, anywhere from one to three or four hours just on the calls every Tuesday. But to see the progress, you know, y'all saw some of it. But even since then, it's just, it's crazy, yeah.
It's impressive to see it coming along.
Sure is.
If I've had that chance to walk through it.
That's the only report I have for tonight.
Mike?
When they were speaking today, I immediately thought of the Open Architects dashboard that we showed you last meeting. And one of the things that I want to report is that we've had some successful conversations with our curriculum leaders during our monthly curriculum leader meetings. They've all now, at this point, been introduced to the dashboard. I think it's safe to say that the ELA folks and the math folks were a little bit more excited than the science leadership team because it's just more provided in terms of the information that we can get from the ELA and the math. But, you know, everybody was happy to get that. And Mike Shannon, I believe, said he wished he had this a few months ago because it would have made his life a lot easier. But moving forward, it's something that we can really utilize, especially that demographic piece that we talked about today. Excited for something that's gonna be happening at Mendez and Warren tomorrow. You know, we talk about social-emotional learning all the time and the importance of taking care of our kids. And while it's only going to be thirty minutes, we're going to be doing drop everything and play for our elementary students tomorrow. I know Jim is gonna be going and volunteering in a classroom, as am I. So, he'll be in there around one forty, I think, and I'm gonna be in there around two o'clock. We'll be getting put to work by the folks at Warren. We're gonna be able to play some games with some students, which is probably be the highlight of our week, I'm sure. Excited to send Kathy Frechia, our literacy coach, and Kate Altman, who you've heard from a number of times, and you know that they are just doing some fantastic work for our early literacy students. And as you know, there's this ongoing goal of ours to make sure we are providing our kids with the best of what's out there in terms of access to the right information, the right assessments, and the right sort of concoction of literacy tools to make sure everybody's getting what they need. We're going to be sending them to a really fantastic conference, and I'm excited about that. It's the Plain Talk About Literacy and Learning Conference. And I've challenged them that their goal is to come back with a comprehensive assessment to make sure we are going to have exactly what we need to make sure we are truly getting the data we want. So, they have been sent with a specific charge. We've talked about so many things, and now I think they're gonna have the opportunity to see all these different things in action and hear from folks. So, I'm excited to hear from that, you know, how they do there. Mills Glieses P's have been sent out at this point for our students who are struggling. Great job by the middle school staff to get those out to folks. Safety committee meeting we had last week. And, you know, what we're happy about is that, at this point, all of our schools have undergone a safety drill. They went well. They coordinated with, you know, Officer Muri and the actual police department. They were excited to say that our protocols and procedures are well in place. Obviously, we have some tweaks and things that we always learn from these drills, but it was a productive meeting and a good conversation. And we have some good things to improve upon, but also know that we're in a pretty good place with what we're doing. And finally, selfishly, I had a great week, and this is one of my favorite times of the year. As you know, I enjoy reading to the kids. So, I've been spending my time going in and reading to our elementary school kids. So, it's been a blast, and I'm very excited to do the X Block next week with Mrs. St. Kerr and the students. We'll be doing a little reading till I can go visit my old friends at the high school who are now freshmen, sophomores, seniors and juniors. Yeah, it's a little hot cocoa, and hopefully this year I can keep my emotions back when I read to them. But we'll see.
Have you picked out your selections for your reading?
Always the same, yeah, always the same, yep, always the same.
That's great. Thanks, Mike. Okay, do we have any warrant approvals?
Yes. Between December second, twenty twenty-two, and December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature's payable amount of four hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-two cents. This includes general fund expenses of three hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents revolving expenses of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, fifty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents, grant expenses of twelve thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents, and meals tax expenses of seventy-five dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you. Minutes from December one. Anybody? No issues? Minutes have been great. Thank you. Motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of December first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. Gifts and donations?
Yeah, we have a couple. National agricultural in the classroom, five hundred dollars. The creation of schoolyard garden at the Penderway School in the amount of five hundred dollars. And then we have a number, I'm not gonna read all of the list of folks, but it totals two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. A number of individuals donated to helping our own fund. So, I apologize, but there are so many, it would take a little while, but.
Very nice.
So, the total is three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Move to approve the gifts and donations as presented.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
I need to abstain.
Paul? Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. And then we're up to member updates. I always look right at Paul.
You may have the longest one. You can go first.
Yeah, I don't know. We had a building committee meeting on Tuesday. And, you know, it's exciting for them because they have, we've been alternating virtual and in-person. So, we were in person, so they haven't been in. The committee hasn't had a site walk in two months. So, the last time they saw it, there was, you know, the sheathing was just going up and a little bit of brick on the far west corner was there. So, now with the brick in the gymnasium section pretty much done, the framing even since you all were there, now the gymnasium's framed, the cafeteria's framed, the PE office and that kitchen area back there is all framed. And so, the admin areas, you know, starting to be framed. And so, it's, it changes quite a little bit regularly. So, that was just Tuesday. If I go tomorrow, it'll be different. So, it's a lot, lots of things going on there. We're still struggling with something we thought we put to bed. And I think I shared with you the struggles we had with our electric main electric switch panel that we thought we resolved, and then the resolution now the vendors playing games with that as well. So, always something, but, I mean, aside from that, Jim, I don't know if I'm missing anything that I should be reporting on, but things are progressing.
Anybody else? Thanks, Paul.
No, I was just gonna say it was very cool to get to go for a site walk and to see it all coming together. So, it was, so thank you for organizing that. It's really, it's fun to see it take shape. It looked great.
Yeah, sorry, echo that in terms of the walkthrough. The other thing I'll share is, I think last time, I just mentioned in passing towards the end that we should look forward to a discussion probably in the near future on the topic of the community service requirement at the high school for graduation. There was supposed to be a site council meeting today, yesterday, today, that was postponed until next month, but I did have a conversation with Ms. St. Kerr yesterday by Zoom for about half an hour where she shared with me some of what had been discussed at the prior meeting when I have not been able to be there. And I won't go into detail now, but I think the site council is going to be looking for feedback from the school committee in terms of sort of where do you want us to go next? And they need a little direction, so I think we need to.
Will they have a recommendation?
I don't believe so, but Ms. St. Kerr and I had a, like I said, it was about a half an hour conversation yesterday about it, you know, some concerns about impact of equity and assorted other things. But rather than trying to get into it now when it's not on the agenda, just sort of flagging that so people can be thinking a little bit about it. I think we'll talk about it, agenda planning at some point, but probably, you know, one of our meetings in January would be an appropriate time to come in and have that conversation.
Okay.
And Kelly would be a part of that.
Excellent. Anybody else other than thank you again for the site walk? Same, it's just so impressive and amazing the way it's coming along to see it, you know, after having discussed it.
It's not even the same building since you've been in it.
No, yeah, so we'll have to do it again sometime. Other than that, Aaron? Did you have something?
Nothing for me.
All right, I think we're good. We just need a motion to adjourn. So, moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, 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 aye.
We're adjourned for twenty twenty-two.
Oh, my goodness, last meeting.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Yes, happy holidays, happy New Year, happy December. Wow, see you in twenty twenty-three, everybody.
There you go.
Aye.